The time is now 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is now 6:01 PM. The time is now 7:30 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meeting, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many questions advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item is the Summer Creek High School Army, J.R.O.T.C., will present the colors and Mr. Grabowski will lead us in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We will now observe a moment of silence. You may be seated. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Brown, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely, Madam President. So you know, across Texas, teachers have been preparing their students for STAR testing, which I think began today. In this month's inspiring moment, we see how the UMBLE Middle School Instructional Coaches took STAR prep and most importantly, student academic growth on their campus to a whole new level as they powered up the Wildcats. Look at them over there. Woo!
Every single kid on this campus has the ability to learn. Every single kid on this campus has the ability to be able to make progress and to move forward. We just have to continue finding the ways to challenge them, to motivate them, to encourage them, to excite them, and to make learning fun. The ICs came back to me with the idea of doing power-ups.
So Power Up is a time during our fourth period in advisory where the students are able to get extra assistance in their core content areas to prep for STAR. I pull back to my history in teaching math and special education to be able to assist them with their problems. We utilize videos to help them, and there's definitely a lot of peer tutoring. It's really fun. I like teaching my friends how, like, things that they don't know, I like helping them.
Whenever I really say something that I don't know, it's like fun to hear. So we're kind of just teaching each other.
We've seen a lot of academic growth with our kids, them being more motivated to improve their STAR scores. You've also seen them learn a little bit more, um, reading and math, and so it's been nice to see them improve.
Reading for me was like really hard, and I feel like I've gotten better because like in reading, I had like eighties and stuff, and now I have nineties and above. And that like really helped me improve.
I feel more prepared because we actually take some time to practice stuff that we need to know for STAR other than just one class period.
We kind of brought the idea to our AP. Hey, let's have a pep rally for academics.
Hey, seventh grade, let's go, let's go.
We're able to see student data displayed on the screen on who was able to increase, teacher data on who was able to increase, and the kids get so excited to see that they've made progress.
What we saw in the auditorium, those are kids celebrating learning. And we see that all the time with athletics and fine arts, there is always that public display of success.
Everybody wants to feel affirmed that they're doing something great, and they're getting to do this with their friends. So all of their friends are seeing, hey, the cool thing to do is to be successful academically.
The instructional coaches, they are the life of the party, and so they came up with the theme, uh, of course with all of everything glowing and the lightning bolt. They have matching outfits and things of that nature that they wear. They have gone all out.
We were like, we need a theme song. So we found an instrumental, we wrote and recorded the song that same day. Um, and we've been, yes, and we have been singing it ever since. Our kids will sing it in the hallways.
We are getting kids excited about making progress, that where I started doesn't have to be where I end, and that I can do this.
Our kids are honestly, they're the ones reaping the benefit of this. They are the ones that are getting celebrated, they're the ones that are seeing like, hey, I don't have to be perfect to get celebration. I can grow and be acknowledged, and it's just been great to see.
This is extremely personal to me as an HMS graduate. I want HMS to continue to be shone in a good light. I want our scores to soar as high as they can possibly go, and I want HMS to be seen as a school that can achieve academically and achieve in a more personal aspect, that we're able to build connections with students and help them reach their goals.
Power Up on our campus honestly has been phenomenal. It's really shifted the culture of the entire campus. We really focus on celebration, motivation, and elevation. And honestly, it really has happened. Our scores have increased, our teachers are now more motivated because they want to see what we say about them. And honestly, our kids overall, the attention to detail that they now have taken into making sure that when they assess they're doing their absolute best, has been amazing to see.
All right, well, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the stars of the video. So tonight, we have with us the UMBLE Middle School Instructional Coaches Team, Sharnila Johnson, Jade Jackson, Nikisha Brown, Tiffany Heasley, Melissa Fortes, and Katrina Muton. Look at the stars over there. Okay. I think you all should come and start every one of our Board meetings. I think that'd be awesome. All right, we also have with us the UMBLE Middle School Teacher of the Year, Jessica Wesley. And UMBLE Middle School Assistant Principal, Amy Suchadoll. And so, congratulations. And thank you all so much for being here. I had the opportunity to attend the event, they invited me, and it was awesome. It was a lot of energy. And so thank you all for all your work, for sure. All right, moving on to our next recognition. Each year, students across the nation are honored as National Merit Commended, semifinalists, and ultimately finalists as part of the National Merit Scholarship Program. Tonight, our UMBLE ISD Director of Advanced Learning and Services, Dr. Tong Utakrit, is with us to share about 29 UMBLE ISD students who have earned these honors. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Brown and Board of Trustees. UMBLE ISD is proud to celebrate our 29 students who have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation based on their academic performance on the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Corporation Qualifying Test. Students took this test when they were juniors and received recognition during their senior year, and I'm proud to say that UMBLE ISD's class of 2025 did very well. We're going to start out with our commended students. Commended students represent the top 3% of students in the nation in terms of their achievement on the PSAT. Tonight, we honor 26 students who have earned that commended status. Students, when I call your name, please come up and receive your plaque from Ms. Kristy Huesman, our Advanced Learning Lead Coordinator for High Schools, and then you'll remain up here for a group picture. From Atascocita High School, Byron Johnson. From Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School, Genevieve Soto. From Kingwood High School, Oluwatei Ahedo. Next, Mr. Parker Brown. Parker couldn't be with us tonight, we'll make sure that he gets his award. Our next honoree, Dylan Champion, also could not be here tonight, but we will get him his award as well. Let's give him a round of applause. We also have Ms. Catherine Dollar. Again, Catherine could not be here tonight, but we will get her award as well, so a round of applause for Catherine. Alexander Ebersbaker. Again, Alexander could not be with us in attendance tonight, so we'll get him his award. But again, we want to honor him, round of applause. Next, we have Moriyay Korday. Jonathan Kuzmicus. Again, Jonathan could not be here tonight, but again, another round of applause and we'll get him his award. Lane Limbaugh. Jack Newman. Albert Sun. Albert could not be with us, again, we'll get him his award. Anne Vo. James Ward. Again, James could not be here tonight, and we'll make sure James gets his award. Then Aiden Watson. Again, Aiden could not be with us tonight, we'll get him his award. Next, from Kingwood Park High School, Andrew Carson. We also have Lucas Pagano. From Summer Creek High School, Sidney Atwood. Again, we'll get Sidney her award. Kira Bennett. Again, we'll get Kira her award as well. Garav Gupta. David Gutke. Marley Mazur. Again, Marley could not join us, we'll make sure that the award is presented. Raven Nelson. Andrew Takkas. Virginia Wood. Celia Warden. These are our National Merit Commended Scholars. Congratulations. Now, our National Merit Finalists rank in the top 1% of the students in the United States who took the PSAT and MSQT. So students, when I call your name, please come up to the front. We've got a little bio for the students that we're honoring as National Merit Finals. First, Gavin Chua of Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School. Gavin will be attending Texas A&amp;M University in College Station. He'll be majoring in aerospace engineering as part of the Engineering Honors Program. He plans to fast-track and graduate with a master's in business administration with a focus on aerospace technology. Next, Grayson Green of Kingwood High School. After high school, Grayson will be pursuing an international business major at either the MacCombs Business School at the University of Texas at Austin or Southern Methodist University. C.C. Sullivan of Kingwood Park High School. After graduating from Kingwood Park, C.C. will attend Southwestern University and plans to pursue a double major in biochemistry and mathematics. Congratulations to all of our National Merit Commended and finalists on all of your hard work, and we look forward to celebrating you as you graduate class of 2025.
All right, a huge congratulations. Well, our fine arts education is an important component of what we provide in UMBLE ISD. Tonight, I am proud to highlight the award-winning work of students from the Rodeo Art Show and Youth Arts Month. So UMBLE ISD Assistant Director of Fine Arts, Sandy Newton, is going to tell us a little bit more, so.
I liked watching them walk out with that swagger. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Brown. I'm Sandy Newton, and I am humbled to be UMBLE ISD's Director, Assistant Director of Fine Arts. We appreciate your support and thank you for celebrating a few of the students' successes in UMBLE ISD's award-winning visual art programs. This year, UMBLE ISD Rodeo Art Show showcased the rich educational opportunities for students in UMBLE ISD visual art programs and featured a variety of media, both 2D and 3D. Top awards presented to students include Special Merit, Gold Medal, Best in Show, Reserve Grand Champion, and Grand Champion. Artwork was adjudicated by a panel of eight experienced artists and art educators who considered originality, creativity, craftsmanship, and Western content. Tonight, we are honoring 24 students who received these top honors. As I go through the slides and call the names, I would like to invite students to come forward when their names are called, to receive a plaque, and to be recognized as our 24, 25 UMBLE ISD Rodeo Art Top Winners. I also ask that their art teacher please join your student if you are here this evening. And I apologize if I butcher any names. Special Merit is Michelle Owusu Asamoah, which I don't think she can be here. Special Merit is Maya Elam, from Oak Forest Elementary. Addison Seestronk from Atascocita Middle School. Rhea Hayes from Atascocita High School. Kimberly Mateo from Ross Sterling Middle School. Paisley Price from Atascocita High School. Hannah Ricio from Kingwood High School. Gold Medal winners are Andrew Lozano from Deerwood Elementary. Terrence Payton from Eagle Springs Elementary. Marcus Davis from Atascocita High School. Jaden Wilkerson from Atascocita Middle School. Leah Bonson from Foster Elementary. Avery Fitzgerald from Creekwood Middle School. Melanie Hines from Atascocita High School. Ariseli Medina from Elm Grove Elementary. Emma Singleton from Eagle Springs Elementary. Nathan Griffin from Creekwood Middle School. Marie Lake from Riverwood Middle School. Ava Dunaway from Creekwood Middle School. Caitlin Chow from Summer Creek High School. Isabella Igerman from Atascocita High School. And our Reserve Grand Champion for Elementary is Amanda Okori from Elm Grove Elementary. Our Reserve Grand Champion High School is Kaylee Olding from Summer Creek High School. And our Grand Champion, the big winner, is Maely Clover from Timberwood Middle School. All right, well, they take some pictures, I'll tell you some more things. In addition to the top awards, 12 pieces from almost 1,000 entries were selected by the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation Auction Committee to advance to the Gala Auction that just happened in April. Students will directly benefit from auction proceeds from their artwork college fund. And 12 elementary pieces were selected and photographed for card sets and will be sold in the Spirit Store at the Administration Building. Congratulations to all of our students for a job very well done, and to our visual art teachers for their dedication and commitment to student excellence. Thank you. She needs to get supplies on the way out. Get supplies on the way out. Incidentally, if you're a middle school or a high school student, see the teacher on the way out for some supplies to make your nest masterpiece. Right on the way out. They have it for you. Thank you. Steph will give it to you. Steph will give it to you. Okay, we have two more students that we need to celebrate this evening. I'm going to let the dull roar die down just a sec. Okay, March was National Youth Art Month, and as always, Texas is the leader in youth art month recognitions. Each year, the Texas Art Education Association sponsors an art exhibit in the lower rotunda of the State Capitol Building in Austin. That exhibit has now moved to the Bullock State History Museum, also in Austin. Districts from all, of all sizes from all across the state may submit a very limited number of artwork made by pre-K through 12th grade students to be considered for selection into the Youth Art Month State Capitol exhibit in Austin. I am excited to share that UMBLE ISD had two pieces selected to be a part of the 2025 Texas Youth Art Month Exhibition. These students were celebrated in award ceremony in Austin on March 9, 2025. I would like to invite the following students to come forward to be recognized as our 2025 Texas Youth Art Month Exhibition honorees. As I mention your name, I ask you and your teacher to come forward. Millie Pendleton, Cool Hughes on a Rosie Background from Shadow Forest Elementary. And Arabella Ramirez from Kingwood Middle School, Luna. In celebration of Youth Art Month, and as a token of our appreciation for your support, Bear Branch Elementary has created cards with student artwork as a gift for you. I would like to invite Mia and Jax to come up with a special delivery for you. Thank you, Bear Branch and Ms. Lynch, their art teachers. Congratulations, students, for a job very well done, and to the visual art teachers of UMBLE ISD for providing the inspiration and guidance that allows students to truly excel. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Newton, and to all the students. Congratulations. We do have an excellent fine arts program, and so we appreciate the work of all of our teachers and staff for sure. All right, our staff members go above and beyond, and Ms. Jerry Monbarren, Chief Community Engagement Officer, is going to introduce our superstaffers.
Thank you. Yes, UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer, and from this list, we have selected three honorees to receive additional recognition tonight and some goodies to thanks to an award sponsor. So this month's Superstaffer Awards are sponsored by Kangas Indoor Play Center, and please join me in thanking them as I invite Megan Styron to join me up front. So, as you can see on the screen, the list of employees nominated for our elementary schools. And then from this great pool of awesome employees, we would like to shine a light tonight on our UMBLE ISD Elementary Superstaffer, which is In-Class Support Paraprofessional from Timbers Elementary, Jennifer Miranda Torres. And joining her up front is her principal, Frank Gerga. Thank you, Frank. So, Ms. Miranda Torres serves as an In-Class Support Paraprofessional after beginning the year in pre-K, where she built strong relationships with students through her patience and kindness. She remains flexible and dependable, always willing to step in and support where needed. Her positive attitude, willingness to learn, and dedication to student success make her a valued member of the team. Congratulations, Ms. Miranda Torres. Here's our list of secondary school nominees for this month, and I'm excited to recognize as UMBLE ISD Secondary Superstaffer, Senior Police Officer from Summer Creek High School, Joining Ms. Williams is her principal, Dr. Matthew Manning. Let me tell you a little bit about Officer Williams. She is instrumental to the safety and security of Summer Creek High School. Not only does she ensure our students and staff are in good hands, but she also builds relationships and trust along the way. She responds quickly to any request, trains others on when and how to operate, and always has the best interest of the community in mind. Congratulations, Officer Williams. We are honored to call you a Summer Creek Bulldog. And last, but definitely not least, our UMBLE ISD Support Staffer for this month is Technology Support Cameron Gilmore. Joining Cameron up front is our Chief Technology Officer, Chris Cummings, and a team of fans from the Technology Department, Tony McPherson, Melissa Holloway, and Fong Lee. So Cameron exemplifies what it means to be a dedicated and proactive team member at UMBLE ISD. His ability to efficiently troubleshoot issues and find solutions while maintaining a positive and collaborative attitude makes him an invaluable asset to our department. Cameron understands how putting details together across the Technology Services Team helps to strengthen the department's support of the entire school district. Currently in his last semester of college coursework, Cameron is a proud UMBLE ISD alumnus, giving back to the district as an employee with a bright future. Congratulations.
recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district, from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedures outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for today's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Finally, please be reminded that electioneering and campaign-related speeches are not permitted as part of public comment. The first person signed up for public comment is Mr. Derek King. And then if I could have Ulealea Childs come to the front table right here, and Santiago Acosta and Mr. Henry Phipps, if y'all could please come to this front table.
Good evening. I would like a call to action on Summer Creek's head baseball coach. The Summer Creek baseball coach is very dishonest, dislikes transparency, and practices unethical behavior. This coach's baseball program is rampant with nepotism, indirect discrimination, preferential biases, exclusion, and retaliation. This needs to be addressed immediately. The Summer Creek head baseball coach deliberately gives low tryouts scores to the kids he does not want on the team. This coach also has a defaming playbook he utilizes when he does not want African-American players on his team, or he wants to decrease their playing time. The coach likes to call them raw, insult their baseball intellect even though they have been playing situational baseball all their lives with majority of the kids on his team. The coach labeled players with athletic gifts "raw." Last year, my son and another African-American player were excluded from participating in the scrimmages in class for two weeks. They were made to put balls in the pitching machine while other kids hit. He cut them without allowing them the opportunity to perform in class. Unacceptable. Each year, the number of African-American participants in baseball decreases from each graduating class at Summer Creek. The African-American baseball player has been manipulated, phased out, not allowed to play baseball at all at Summer Creek High School. Last year, I spoke up against this coach's behavior toward others and also advocated for my son in a letter to him and his superiors. This year, my son was deliberately given low scores at tryouts because I spoke up against this coach's unethical practice. This is called retaliation. I requested a meeting with this coach, and he unprofessionally ignored the request for a meeting. I brought my concerns to the UMBLE ISD Athletic Director, and he has refused to investigate this coach's behavior properly of the Summer Creek head baseball coach. The Athletic Director, I found to be tone deaf, and he has still not responded to my last email on date March 14, 2025. I ask, is this how UMBLE ISD does business, or is this how you do business with your minority population? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Childs?
Good evening, members of the School Board. My name is Dr. Ulealea Childs, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my daughter and the troubling experiences she's faced at Summer Creek High School. Firstly, my daughter has been denied access to her academic instruction and assignments. She was forced to complete a disciplinary packet before she could engage with her coursework, which is a direct violation of her right to education. This policy is not only punitive, but also counterproductive. Students are being threatened with academic penalties, including loss of credit and in-school suspension if they do not complete these baseless packets, which show no evidence of decreasing violations of the Student Code of Conduct nor bullying and harassment incidents. This creates an environment of fear rather than of learning. This emotional and educational stress that results from inconsistent and punitive disciplinary practices is unacceptable. When I sought clarity on the policies regarding the confiscation of my daughter's Chromebook due to my request for her to complete her academic assignments in lieu of the packet, I was met with vague responses from Administrator Mr. Herndon and Assistant Superintendent Mr. Hicks. There must be transparency in these policies, and parents deserve to know when and how disciplinary actions are implemented. Moreover, my daughter was subjected to excessive suspensions, both out of school and in school, which seemed to be the default response to any behavior issues at Summer Creek High School. It is concerning that there's no effort to implement restorative practices or clear rationale provided for these excessive punishments. When I inquired about the levels of discipline outlined in the Code of Conduct, I received no clear answers from the administration. This lack of consistency and rationale creates confusion and frustration for both students and parents. My daughter's been threatened multiple times with DAEP despite having no prior disciplinary history, as well as there's been no considerations that coincide with the Student Code of Conduct. I was misled by administrators regarding the involvement of councils and administration discussing restorative practices, which has left me feeling that my daughter's safety and academic success are not priorities at Summer Creek High School. It has also come to my attention that students are facing an alarming trend of excessive suspensions with reports that some students are being assigned up to six days of out-of-school suspension, which is a violation of policy. This is a serious concern as it removes students from direct instructions and hinders their academic progress. During these suspensions, students often do not receive assignments unless they proactively email their teachers repeatedly, which is an unreasonable expectation. I urge the Board to investigate these practices and consider a more effective disciplinary approach that prioritizes education and emotional well-being. Our students deserve better than the current system that employs fear and punishment over support and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Childs. My apologies, Dr. Childs. Is Mr. Acosta here? Mr. Phipps?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Brown, UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees, and Ms. Martin. They leave you out sometimes. I'm here tonight to speak about an incident that occurred on Tuesday, March 25, two weeks ago today. During a leadership team meeting with 125 to 150 campus-based administrators in attendance, a cabinet-level administrator used a microphone to inform those in attendance that they were so upset after their house lost power during a hurricane that they wanted to lynch the mayor. They then echoed lynching the mayor by stating, "I wanted to take him out back and hang him from a tree." This happened two weeks ago. I, along with others, have tried to remedy this matter at the lowest level. We have been unsuccessful. I am requesting that the Board of Trustees for UMBLE ISD conduct an independent investigation into this incident and utilize an investigator who is not affiliated with UMBLE ISD in any way. I encourage the Board to look into emails and iHelp messages sent regarding lynching in UMBLE ISD. Again, during a leadership team meeting of 125 district and campus-based administrators in attendance, a cabinet-level administrator used a microphone to inform those in attendance that they were so upset after they lost power to their home during the hurricane that they wanted to lynch the mayor. They then echoed lynching the mayor by stating, "I wanted to take him out back One of the cabinet-level administrators asked me, "Why are you doing this?" I didn't answer them. But I'm gonna answer you all tonight with that, answer that question. I've met with Dr. Brown on three separate occasions to address this issue. He informed me, "Henry, you're the only member of my cabinet to say anything or have any concerns. Just you." So why am I saying something? Because apparently, Dr. Brown's comments only offended me. Thank you.
The next commenter is Tess Mustaine, and then Mrs. Christie Ford, if you'll come to this front seat, followed by Larissa Powell and Dr. Janie Branham.
Good evening. Ooh, hello. My name is Tess Mustaine, and I am Vice President of the UMBLE Association of Texas Professional Educators. Along with HARA, the local unit of Texas Retired Teachers Association, we are sponsoring a School Board Candidate Forum on Thursday, April 10, that's this Thursday, at Summer Creek High School. The doors will open at 10, excuse me, at 6:00 PM in order for people to mingle in the lobby with the candidates. The forum itself will be from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. After the forum, attendees can once again visit with candidates until the doors close at 8:30. I am happy to report that all 10 candidates will participate in this forum. We are looking forward to seeing our We are looking forward to seeing our community on Thursday at Summer Creek High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford?
Good evening. My name is Christie Ford, and I am speaking to you tonight as the Vice Chair of the Libertarian Party of Harris County. We, the Libertarian Party of Harris County, invite the community to case on questions this Saturday, April 12th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Hacienda Los Arcos on 1960 in Atascoceta. This is your opportunity to come out and meet the school board candidates in a relaxed come-and-go style. Get to know your candidates on a more personal level. This is the community's chance to ask the candidates the questions that matter to you, where they have more than one to two minutes to respond. We are putting the people back into the race. I look forward to seeing the community and the candidates this Saturday at Hacienda Los Arcos from 2:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford and Mrs. Powell.
Good evening. I'm Larissa Powell. I want to start by saying how great it was to see Mr. Grabowski, Mr. Scarfo, Ms. Parker, and Mr. Kerthauffer at the candidate forum last Thursday. It was a wonderful opportunity for our community to come together and learn about the candidates up for the school board. I was really surprised to hear Mr. Kerthauffer make promises about giving teachers a substantial raise, especially while asking for their votes. Mr. Kerthauffer, as the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee, it feels really inappropriate and icky for you to use your position in this way. Where is the money supposed to come from? Because we're broke. Are you just gonna fill empty promises for votes? Because this isn't fair for our teachers. They work hard and they deserve honesty, not empty promises that are contingent upon you winning. Additionally, I want to address something else that concerns me. Tonight, the district is planning on voting to pull another $2.5 million from our assigned fund balance. Why are we giving more taxpayer dollars to outside attorneys when we already have skilled attorneys working for the district? Our own legal team should be handling open records and overseeing all legal matters, not outside legal counsel. You're wasting our money. As a board, you were elected to ensure that our resources are used wisely. I'm tired of standing up here, meeting after meeting, watching you destroy this district. It's despicable, it's dishonest, and it's disgusting. They deserve better. You represent them, and these people deserve better. Dr. Brown, I have no words for you, other than I think you should resign.
Dr. Branham?
Good evening, School Board Trustees and Dr. Roger Brown. My name is Janie Branham. I'm a proud parent of UMBLISD graduates. As a parent, I want to thank the teachers of UMBLISD for keeping our students safe and for creating challenging and exciting lessons for our students. We, the parents, are extremely impressed with our teachers. We trust them with our children, and are grateful and blessed to have them working in our school district. With this said, I want to encourage the school board members to give the teachers a significant, a significant pay raise. We need to remain competitive with the surrounding school districts, and our teachers must deal with the rising cost of living. We want to keep all of our talented and wonderful teachers in place in UMBLISD to continue excellence in education like we witnessed tonight. We need more celebrations, a lot more celebrations. All we needed now was just cake and some coffee, and it would have been excellent. I congratulate you for such excellence, Dr. Roger Brown. I want to congratulate also the UMBLISD Council of PTAs and other community organizations for hosting a very successful school board candidates forum on April 3rd. Additionally, we invite the teachers in the community to attend the candidates forum set for this Thursday, April 10th, at Summer Creek High School, starting at 7:00 PM. It is sponsored by the UMBL Association of Texas Professional Educators and the Retired Teachers Organization, HARA. We, the parents, support the school board candidates that continue to maintain focus on every child's academic growth, and those that support our teachers with additional tutors, instructional resources, and higher pay for our professionals and all of our teachers. In closing, congratulations to all of our teachers for a successful year. We all witnessed how hard they work this evening. Congratulations, Dr. Roger Brown, for sharing those success stories with us. We value the teachers' professionalism and numerous contributions to education. We, the parents, accept the responsibility to send every day well-behaved children to our school that respect our teachers and remain focused on learning math, reading, and writing on a daily basis. Thank you, school board members, for doing an exceptional job.
Thank you, Dr. Branham. Is Coach Jackson here?
To the school board, to also the candidates that are running. I also participated in the forum. It was very informative. I also say, you have some outstanding candidates, and some of you are running for reelection. I think you talked about the health clinic. I caught the tail end of that. It's very necessary. There's a big drug problem in this community. Fentanyl is killing young white males in particular. We know what it's doing to the African-American community. But I'm hopeful that we're gonna elect the right people on the board. And those that do not win, I hope you stay active and form a support community to support the board members when they're right and get on them when they're not. If you don't win, don't go away. Let's form a support parent, community, diverse, God-led, Bible. We say we're Christians. Just about everybody in here will say they're a Christian. Prove it. Prove it! Let's work together. I'm willing. But something has got to get cleaned up, right? We hear what's going on. Some of it is, some of it is right, some of it is questionable. Not questioned about anybody's character or anything else, but there is a problem. I live in this community. I used to work for UMBL. Dr. Brown, I met you the other day when you came out of the office. That was me. You gave me your card. I didn't email you, but I'm here. I want to work with every one of you. I don't have any political ties, right? You know what side I'm on? The right side. That's the side I'm on. Wherever the evidence leads, that's what needs to be done, okay? Some of our leaders in our schools, they're not doing the right thing. That's why they got rid of me. We talked about the special ed population. You cannot transfer people into your district. You have to give them a art for proper placement.
Sorry, sir. Your time has expired.
Thank you, Coach Jackson. We will now have a presentation from, oh, Dr. Brown, did you?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make some comments. Hey, Rusty, would you mind pulling up the picture? Thank you, Rusty. Okay, so I would like to address comments that were made here tonight. This school year, when I've been meeting with the staff, I've been talking about us just focusing on the good. Let's focus on the good. A couple of weeks ago, we had a leadership meeting that started with a student reading a poem he had written to the leadership team. We talked about our budget outlook. We talked about our healthcare plan. And then there were pictures recognizing staff who had received recognitions, like Ms. Bland and Ms. Wagner. I ended the meeting with this slide, and I shared how I had been reading a book about the settling of the Old West, and that this picture here just really caught my eye. The struggles of just daily living for this couple had to have been really challenging. I then said, "Do you remember when Hurricane Barrel hit last summer? And how we wanted to lynch Center Point and the mayor?" This was in reference to being without power and air for days. But then I turned to this picture, and I said, "But they never had it." I then made a comment about how blessed we are. I never, never meant for this exaggerated comment to be taken literally. No one, including myself, was actually wanting to harm Center Point or Mayor Whitmire or Mayor Thunderberg. And I have no doubt that the individuals at Center Point and both mayors were working diligently to return power to all of us. My point was simply that as human beings, we can get upset about things, but in the big picture, we're really fortunate today. But after the meeting, Mr. Phipps approached me and said that some of the staff had reached out concerned about my comments. And I was surprised. And later, I called Mr. Phipps. I was on my way to the Teacher of the Year celebration, and I said, "Hey, I'm just really sick about this. This is really bothering me. And I want to meet with any of those individuals that reached out to you." And that afternoon, I met with Mr. Phipps and six other staff members, and I apologized to them. While I had no ill intent, I have been reflecting on my conversations with Mr. Phipps and the others. And I want everyone to know that I am very sorry for using such an insensitive word. It was never my intent to offend anyone. And I do apologize for that. I truly, truly do. There were probably 150 members present at the leadership team meeting, maybe more. Seven have reached out and met with me, and I appreciate that. And I just want the other staff members who were at the leadership team meeting, if they would like to meet with me, or any staff member would like to meet with me, I welcome that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. This matter is currently under investigation. As soon, as soon as the complaint was received, as Board President, I contacted the District Council, Mr. Binkley, to ensure it was being handled in accordance with UMBLISD board policy. We will now have a presentation from Detective Elvia Villarreal and Detective Christian Gonzalez. They serve in the Harris County Sheriff's Office, Adult Special Crimes Section, Special Victims Division. They are part of a human trafficking unit.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Elvia Villarreal. I'm a detective with Harris County Sheriff's Office, and I've been with our human trafficking unit for three years. Here to discuss a little bit about human trafficking. It's a lot of information, and I don't have a lot of time, obviously. I was told seven to 10 minutes. But I can't really cram everything, so just bear with me. I'm gonna try to not go super fast, but try to get it up. So one of the biggest things that we see is not a lot of people understand the difference between human smuggling and human trafficking. And it always gets confused one for the other. So by definition, human smuggling involves the transportation of a person across an international border. So it's an agreement between a smuggler and a person that wishes to cross a border. So it's consensual. Human trafficking is the exploitation of a person through forced fraud or coercion for purposes of forced labor, sexual exploitation, or domestic servitude. The goal here is to profit off of a victim's body or labor. Sex trafficking involves sex acts in exchange for a fee, which is why we see the prostitution-sex trafficking nexus. They go hand-in-hand normally, however, not every person that is prostituting is a victim of sex trafficking. So it's important to know that. Labor trafficking can look like a lot of things. It can look like an all-pair. It can look like a landscaper, a factory worker, field worker. You know, we get a lot of the phone calls from the community saying the people that are selling flowers on the streets, are they involved? Are they being trafficked? And there is a possibility. However, nine times out of 10, they don't want to discuss or disclose any information to us, so it's underreported. It could be a lot of things. Fear. Normally, the situation here is a lot better than back home in their country. Them making $20 here is something that they're not getting back home in their countries. So it is underreported. Human smuggling can turn into human trafficking. Say, a person paid a smuggler to get to the US or to get to Canada or wherever. Now, the smuggler is going to exploit that, and they're going to be forced to pay debt. So that's when we get involved, and it becomes human trafficking. And in situations like this, we work with our federal partners, with HSI, and we work hand-in-hand to try to get both angles. So this is just a little bit of the charges that we file. I'm going to skip it. We don't just do human trafficking. It can evolve into a lot of things: money laundering, engaging in organized crime, and things like that. So this is just a little bit of that. What is compelling forced fraud or coercion? Kidnapping, torture, you know, physical restraint, sexual abuse. The fraud part is withholding documents or false promises, saying you're gonna be a model, and you're not a model. Misrepresentation of work conditions. Coercion is threats, threats of harm, controlling them by some means. So we're gonna move to another misconception. I'm not gonna go there yet. Another misconception that we get in the community is that it always involves kidnapping, physical force, or some type of physical restraint. So, you know, on social media, you'll see like, "Oh, there was a white van at Target," and they're probably traffickers. And I want to get on there so bad and tell everyone, like, "Hey, that's really not what we're seeing," right? So it looks a lot differently than how it's being represented on social media and movies and stuff like that. So we're not seeing the victim chained up in a dark basement, or the white van, or somebody following you. It looks, it looks different, and many victims are manipulated or coerced and deceived rather than forcibly taken. Traffickers can be anybody, just as a sex buyer can be anybody and a victim can be anybody. They look completely different. No two people are alike. So traffickers are not always strangers. Most times, they can be family members. That's familial sex trafficking that we see. A romantic partner, an employer, a friend, a teacher, a mentor, pastor, be a lot of things. Traffickers often use psychological control, threats, debt, or manipulation instead of physical force. Victims may appear to be free to leave because they're not chained, but the chains are psychological. Another misconception is that sex trafficking or labor trafficking victims are only women and girls. That's not true. Men and boys can also be trafficked, mostly in the labor section. However, we do have sex trafficking victims that are males. A lot of people think that trafficking victims is not happening here. It's just maybe undocumented victims, or they come from poor countries, foreign. Not true. I've been with our unit for three years, and I've only had one undocumented victim. Everyone else, they're citizens, they're residents. So key players. Who's involved? We have the recruiter, the trafficker, the buyer, and the victim. So the recruiter is sometimes the trafficker himself, or sometimes he has a female that we call the bottom. The bottom is a female trusted by the trafficker who is appointed to recruit a victim, oftentimes by befriending or seducing them. The trafficker himself is the person that controls the victims. The trafficker gains control through abuse, threats, and lies. As mentioned, a trafficker can be anybody. The buyer is what we call a John. So the buyer is the person that's funding the sex industry by purchasing these services. And a buyer can also look like anyone. We've had police officers. We've had, we had an assistant chief. We've had teachers. We've had school counselors. We've had doctors, nurses, CEOs of businesses, everything. I was just in class, and it was like the number two of like Shell or something got caught. But it can look like anybody, and it's the scariest part, is that you, it doesn't look like one thing. When we talk about a trafficker, we're not talking about, you know, the big hat with the pimp cane. That's not what it is. It's the same for a John. And it's the same for a victim, too. So this is a recruiter, just talked about it. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the trafficking process because I think it's very important specifically for the school setting. The recruitment starts here. Traffickers and recruiters are going to target a vulnerability. And then they lure their victims by love, you know, using love, affection, safety. And, gonna skip it, and then I'm gonna go back. So the vulnerabilities that we see are lacking basic needs. Maybe we have a foster kid, doesn't have family, you know, maybe their siblings got split up, placement homes. Sexual abuse history is a really, really big one, but it's not the only one. We have some victims that were not sexually abused as kids, but then they get into the trafficking, and they are being sexually abused. Peer pressure, exposure. So then we get into the grooming, sorry, grooming. Building the trust. They're going to promise them all kinds of things. Oh, your dad didn't, you know, get you your phone, or he took your phone. Oh, I'll buy you one. They're gonna shower them with gifts. That's part of the grooming process. They're gonna supply them with drugs, alcohol, whatever they need. You know, oh, my parents made me so upset. They, you know, I don't want to go to school tomorrow, and they're forcing me. Oh, we'll just say you're going to school, and I'll pick you up. And so they start grooming them and doing all these things that maybe their parents aren't doing, or they're not allowing them to wear certain things. Okay, I'll buy it for you. It's an entire process. They start distancing the victims from family or friends. And then we get to abusing the victim. So then you get to trafficking, where they're actually engaging in. And they're forcing the victim into trafficking through threats, violence, or blackmail. I think it's... So how are victims being recruited? And this is really big because it's happening in schools, and it's literally hidden in plain sight. Social media is where it's happening. Again, we're not waiting for your kids to be picked up in a white van. They are being contacted on Instagram, on MeetMe, on Kick, on phones. If, I don't belong to Umbel, didn't go to school in Umbel. I don't know rules, policies for here. But if kids are allowed to use cellphones in your schools, the predators are in your school. They're not in a white van waiting for them. If they are on social media, the predators are there. They are lurking, and they're waiting for the right moment to target the kids. Females, everyone, boys, girls, everyone gets it. And it's really unfortunate because identification is not, it's just not enough people know about it. And I get really frustrated when I give these community outreach and, you know, community events, and no one knows what human trafficking is. And I think if we educate teachers and if we educate staff to look at the right things, that's way more eyes than I can ever be. I'm one person. My unit only has four people and one sergeant. So three others and one sergeant for all of Harris County. There are some ISDs that don't have personnel trained on human trafficking. And if they do, it's from, I'm not saying NGOs are bad, but in the law enforcement perspective, it's different. And I think it's necessary to train and put on these trainings, unexcused absences. The school knows about it. The teachers know about it. And no one is calling, hey, something's going on. No one's calling and reporting anything. I got asked a question at a presentation that I gave last month. Is trafficking happening in schools? Absolutely. 100% it's happening. Everyone turns the blind eye, or maybe no one knows what to look for. But it's unacceptable. It really is. Again, some of the social media is just Instagram, Facebook, Kick Me, dating apps. Phone safety, internet safety, needs to be taught. And they use these because they can glamorize it. And kids overshare information on social media about, you know, being upset with parents, or, hey, I ran away, or I don't want to be here anymore, or my dad's out of town. Or maybe they have a license plate on their picture. Maybe an address. So yeah, the traffickers are gonna glamorize the lifestyle. And kids like that. Kids like money. Kids like drugs. These are just some of the vulnerabilities. Again, unexplained absences in school is really big. A large amount of unexplained money, branding, tattoos. I've seen more kids now with tattoos in high school than I think I have ever seen. Insane. Avoiding eye contact, maybe being malnourished is one of the big ones because these girls can't go back to their trafficker if they don't have enough money. And if they don't have enough money, sometimes they're not fed. Again, I don't really have time to explain all of that, like the process, but maybe another time I'll get invited somewhere else. I don't know. Checking into hotels with older males, or maybe being picked up by older males from school. Someone is aware of those things. This is a part of our task force. The age prostitution started. Under 18 is the largest, 44%. Sex buyers' age, 31 to 40 is the largest. Y, Harris County, proximity to border. Again, I'm not gonna really get into this. This is our task force that we're a part of. We have advocacy services and victim services. We work with a lot of NGOs to assist these kids and victims. And if anyone wants to call something in, here are some phone numbers. I don't have my phone number up here or my email, but if anybody needs it, I can provide that. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I have a point of privilege? There is a young lady from Kingwood Park that I invited here tonight who just recently participated in the FIFA World Cup qualifiers in Nicaragua. And I would really hate to wait all the way to the end of the meeting before I recognize her. I just wanted to know if that would be okay? Okay. Journey Feliciano, would you please stand up? Come forward, yes. Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. So I'm just gonna read the notes that I have. So basically, Journey Feliciano is a Kingwood Park student, and she just returned from playing in the FIFA World Cup qualifiers, U-17 in Nicaragua. Come on past the barriers. She played for Team Puerto Rico and scored her first international goal, which resulted in Puerto Rico leading in the group. This also is the first team from Puerto Rico to score on Canada. They led the group until the last few minutes before falling short of making it to the World Cup in Morocco. She will still be on Puerto Rico, Team Puerto Rico, for the foreseeable future. This lovely young lady attends Kingwood Park, and she is only in 10th grade. Just want to say congratulations and thank you for being here this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Moving on to our next agenda item, action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approves the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Scarfo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes, 7-0. Oh, 6-0. Moving on to item 5, our consent agenda item. Item 5A, approval of minutes from the March 18, 2025 regular board meeting. Consent. Item 5B, approval of minutes from the March 29, 2025 special board meeting. Consent. Item 5C, approval of goods, professional services and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5D, 2024, 2025, construction and construction-related purchases. Consent. Item 5E, bond fund capital projects, budgetary transfers. Consent. Item 5F, budgetary transfers and amendments. Consent. Item 5G, tax refunds, overpayment, and paid in error. Consent. Item 5H, board authorization of inter-local agreements. Consent. Item 5I, approval of additional vendors related to RFP number 2021-005-08 general merchandise. Consent. Item 5J, approval of vendors related to RFP number 2021-009-12 restaurants and catering. Consent. Item 5K, approval of additional vendors related to RFP number 2023-103-32 school safety products and services district-wide. Consent. Item 5L, approval of additional vendors related to RFP number 2024-102-5 software subscriptions and web-based applications. Consent. Item 5M, approval of RFP number 2025-18 transportation, fleet technology, suite, GPS, student tracking, route tracking. Consent. Item 5N, approval of RFP 2025-19 depository banking services. Consent. Item 5O, district-wide generator, preventative maintenance, inspections, repairs, and new purchases. Consent. Item 5P, approval of additional vendors related to RFP number 2025-101D transportation, fleet repairs, maintenance, and services district-wide. Consent. Item 5Q, approval of additional vendors related to RFP number 2025-105B awards and promotional items. Consent. Item 5R, detective change orders. Consent. Item 5S, general contractor selections for Summer Creek High School traffic signal project. Consent. Item 5T, general contractor selection for flooring project at Maple Brook Elementary. Consent. Item 5U, architect selection for elementary daylighting, city of Houston. Consent. Item 5V, staff development waiver for the 2025-2026 school year. Consent. Mr. Holmes, may I please have a motion?
Madam President, I'm sorry. I wanted to pull, you went so fast, I couldn't stop, I couldn't get there.
Could turn your mic on.
I'm sorry. I wanted to pull something, but you went so fast, I couldn't get your attention or stop.
What would you like to pull, Mr. Scarfo?
I wanted to pull F.
F?
Yeah.
Mr. Holmes, may I please have a motion?
I move to approve the changes to assign fund balance as well as increased revenue budget and transfers between functional categories for summer professional development, campus projects, safety inspections, and GASB compliance.
Mr. Binkley, do we need the motion to approve all consent items exclusive of F and go back to?
Yes.
Is that what it says? Is that what you said? My apologies.
So I thought we were going off. Okay, we can do that with two.
Couldn't withdraw his motion and then make the correct one if he would like.
Do you care to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through 5B with the exception of 5F.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Lamont Dixon. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes, 7-0. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
For F.
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve the changes to assign fund balance as well as increased revenue budget and transfers between functional categories for summer professional development, campus projects, safety inspections, and GASB compliance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Lamont Dixon. Any discussion? Mr. Scarfo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Beatty, correct me if I'm wrong. Could you explain the $2.5 million I heard referred to as being for legal expenses? That is clearly for, that fund balance transfer is for medical claims, correct? Health claims?
That's correct. That's for medical claims.
Okay, so $2.5 million is not for legal fees? Okay, $2.5 million. Okay, it's for health?
Health, medical claims.
Claims, right? Okay, thank you. Just wanted that clarification. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Beatty, can you explain that we have transfers in and out of the fund balance every meeting or every other meeting or so? Can you kind of explain that to the public?
Sure. So we do utilize fund balance. There's, we could choose to utilize fund balance throughout the year if things come up, like medical claims, if we need to. We also utilize fund balance at the start of the year. So during the budget process, as we go through and move further along with that, oftentimes, we will approve one-time budget items. And so we'll utilize fund balance for those purposes as well. So if you look at the budget summary report, you might notice that it looks like we have more expenses than the revenue that we are projecting for the year. And that's because we're utilizing fund balance for those expenditures. So the expenditures are on the, we do show those expenditures, the increase for those one-times. But we already receive the revenue for those expenses. So that's why you see the lower revenue up at the top. But sometimes we revise that revenue as well. So you'll notice this board meeting that we actually revised up our revenue. The large portion of that is that as the state receives new PMS reports from us, they start processing that. And it looks like we're gonna receive about $16 million more than what we originally had projected. So the budget is, you know, a snapshot of where we're at right now. And then, you know, as things materialize and the actuals hit throughout the year, then we'll see how we end up finishing. But we will utilize fund balance. It does show up on our expenditures, but we can't, we don't show that revenue again. We just show that we're using fund balance for those expenditures. So you'll hear above the line and below the line. And above the line, we're doing well. Below the line, we utilize the fund balance when we need to. And for a little bit of perspective, we always use fund balance for the last couple of years we have when necessary. And we had, after everything was said, audited financials, we had an overall decrease of $2 million to fund balance after it was all said and done. So some of the numbers on these reports at this moment in time may look like bigger decreases of fund balance. But I actually, if you look at the actuals report that's in the information on, we're actually projecting a surplus. So it's two reports looking at, from two different perspectives at one point in time.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, thank you, I had asked Mr. Beatty, I was going to wait till we got to the end, but you asked him then, and that was exactly what I was going to ask him to explain. So, Mr. Beatty, just to follow up, for a claim to be made that we're broke is farthest from the truth based on what our actual numbers are and what we see them to be, it's very solid.
We're in a very strong financial position, superior rating by TEA standards, $209 million fund balance to start the year, and right now we're projecting to end at 214, 213, we'll see what happens throughout the rest of the year, but attendance is a lot to, attendance improvement is what is doing really well this year for us.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, can you just touch on that real, real quick, Billy, to let the community know how attendance does tie into, to that, and how well we're doing year over year?
Well, a large part is the state revenue that we're increasing, revising up that revenue, the 16 million, a lot of that's due to the increase in ADA, and that's, that goes out to all the campus and the work their teachers, principals have been putting into attendance initiatives, it's showing that it was effective, and so that additional revenue that we weren't, we weren't budget, we didn't have that budgeted, so that puts us in a position for, to look at actually budgeting that revenue. If we expect for that revenue to continue, then we can utilize that revenue for the next-year budget. So, we're looking very closely at that, and, you know, that's in our projections for the next-year budget, that increased revenue.
And one more question, have we ever voted for a deficit budget?
Not to my knowledge, or not, not least the budgets I have worked on and recommended to the board, those have all been, none of those have been deficits.
Thank you. Anybody further? All those in favor? Item passes 7O. There are no action items, so we will move on to information items. Item 7A, intruder detection audit report, Mr. Perkins.
The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements, 11 schools were reviewed, two findings were identified across all campuses reviewed, all corrected, corrective actions have been completed at this time, further detail has been provided to the board in executive session for the purposes of safety and security.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Item 7B, technology update, Mr. Cummings, will you give a technology update, please?
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and community stakeholders. My name is Chris Cummings, I'm the Chief Technology Officer for UMBLE ISD. I appreciate the opportunity to present an update on the progress and impact of the 2022 bond technology initiatives. Tonight's presentation highlights the strides we've made in enhancing learning environments across the district through device deployment, classroom technology, and critical infrastructure updates. Thanks to your and the community's support, we're equipping our teachers and students with the tools they need to thrive in today's digital world while strategically investing in a robust and future-ready infrastructure. Let's take a look at what's been accomplished, what's still ahead, and how we are ensuring that every campus is connected, empowered, and ready for success. At this time, I'd like to invite Melissa Holloway, our Director of Campus Technology and Support.
Good evening. Thank you for having us up here tonight. Proposition B of the May 2022 bond election has allowed UMBLE ISD to substantially improve the technology environment across the district. We analyzed data to develop a sustainable refresh cycle that emphasized much-needed staff devices replacement without sacrificing technology for learning. Within two years of the bond's voter approval, almost 3,800 staff members at 42 campuses have received new laptops or desktop PCs appropriate to the work that they do and the role supporting the district and our students. We do know our alphabet, the order looks a little bit out of, skewed. What we did in analyzing all of that data was determine the campuses with greatest need based on their oldest technology to come to the best providing of technology in the order where it was needed most and getting it to them most quickly. These schools received technology in that first set of 42 with staff devices. Since May of 2022, however, 24 campuses have also seen that refresh of classroom technology and student devices. We've had almost 10,000 new Chromebooks, I'm sorry, a little over 10,600 new Chromebooks and almost 400 charging carts come into play at those 24 campuses, along with more than 1,400 interactive flat panels in each of the classroom learning spaces. Today, we have already on order new Chromebooks and charging carts for the next round of schools, as you see listed here, and we'll be working to determine the correct number of interactive flat panels, IFPs, through campus-specific walks this spring. The improvements, we've been really excited, have been met positively throughout the district. We've received a number of shout-outs and kudos that celebrate the learning, we're excited to help improve with technology improvements in our campuses. Where we didn't quite have this reception at every campus we visited, we did have great vibes coming from all staff as we brought in new technology, and as we brought it into classrooms, and as we wield in Chrome carts to help all of our kiddos. One thing to remember is that while the equipment is part of it, it's only as good as the operational side behind it. The operations powering them can be better explained by our Director of Network Services,
Thanks, Melissa. So you guys have may have noticed that we have had several E-Rate purchases made throughout the last couple of years. E-Rate is a federally funded program that UMBLE ISD is leveraging to upgrade our network infrastructure. The district will invest $8 million of those federal dollars into our core routing, wireless infrastructure, internet bandwidth expansion, UPS battery backups, and next-generation firewalls over the course of the next couple of years. The technology lady can't work the technology. While our district is working tirelessly on internal infrastructure, there are some external factors that we must contend with. One of those you'll see here, which is a fiber break. Sometimes those fiber breaks result in downtime that the district has no control over. Historically, we're, and we've been at the mercy of our provider. The district supports 900 miles of aerial fiber over our 89 square mile footprint. Just this past weekend, lightning struck a tree during the storm that we had on Saturday night, causing it to fall and damage a large portion of our connections, which you'll see here. Because the district has implemented some of the internal networking infrastructure upgrades already, none of our campuses were impacted by this major outage. The outage lasted 36 hours, and as we mentioned earlier, it was a testing day today, but none of our campuses were impacted because of the projects that we've been able to complete and implement resiliency and redundancy in our network connections to give our campuses the coverage that they need to work all of the devices that Melissa is, and her team is implementing into the classrooms. You may have noticed the fiber being buried on your way in tonight, out here at Eastway Village Drive on the feeder road, we're working on some projects to change some of that aerial fiber to buried fiber, which adds a little bit more resiliency for us. We're also working to enhance our network topology, including our guest Wi-Fi, and prepare for future growth. We're streamlining our infrastructures as they're critical to supporting our district-issued equipment and our district-standard systems. So what's next? We have a lot of projects coming up. There will be a district-wide upgrade of our Cisco Voice Over IP phone system, a RICO copier fleet refresh coming in June 2025, brand-new shiny copiers, a system-wide Motorola radio refresh for all of our campuses, and we're going to be working to refine our identity management and Google platforms, so that way all of our devices and peripherals work
I have a very unique purpose of working with these wonderful people. We invite feedback from our community, from our board, from our, from our staff members, and these folks go out and they find solutions, whether it is addressing copier issues with new contracts, or putting cybersecurity measures into, to protect our student data, these folks do a wonderful job every day. Thank you for your time and continued support on the Bond 2022 Proposition B initiatives. As reflected in the progress made from the deployment of thousands of devices to ongoing infrastructure upgrades, it's clear that these investments are making meaningful difference across the campuses. Looking ahead, we remain committed to strategic planning, smart implementation, and delivering the tools and technology to empower teachers and learning at every level. We're excited about what's next, and confident together, we're building a stronger, more connected future for UMBLE ISD. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, not so much a question, but just want to say thank you, Mr. Cummings, you have a fantastic team, and in spite of sometimes daunting circumstances, I'm still trying to push through. So again, thank you, you guys do a fantastic job, I see you back there too, buddy, thank you, you guys are awesome, again, in spite of, just appreciate it.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Grabowski?
Thank you, Madam President. May I ask where our internet signal originates?
So we currently have a co-location that's about 23 miles down the road in Spring, that house all of our data centers and our ISP connections. So we rely on that 23-mile span of aerial fiber to remain intact, to get the signals from our co-location to the district. So there is some vulnerability in that, and that's why we just implemented that, it's called a border routing project, we did, we planned for that for two years and implemented about two months ago, and that's why you didn't see any issues when you saw that major break, as well as some of that underground work that we're continuing to work on.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Scarfo?
I also just want to pile on with the thank yous, I know you guys do so much with so little in terms of staff, you guys really punch above your weight, as they say, you really do, each and every day, all you guys, and I just want to, I appreciate, I know there's issues that come up, we have them too at my employer's main campus, but, and we have two places we're getting it from, so, because we could spend the extra money, and, you know, but, so, what you guys do every day, the fact that it works almost all of the time, so hats off to all of you guys.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Moving on to Item 7C, the South Ag Barn update. Dr. Lee will give us an update on the South Ag Barn.
Good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. In November, we presented to you our plan for the South Ag Barn to upgrade it to align better with the programmatic standards of our North Barn. Our primary objectives were wall panels in all of the barns, overhead garage doors, concrete in our pig barn, new panels for our pens, a concrete sand and manure pits, and a new cattle wash station. So today, I want to show you what we have been able to accomplish in a very short amount of time. I also cannot work the technology. Here we go. Okay, so what you see here on our timeline, which is always up, subject to change, the official construction began on March 17th, so a little less than a month ago, although with Jason's team and our construction and our ag teachers and Mr. Blair, our barn manager, we were doing some pre-work ahead of time. But I do want to highlight one thing that's also in this picture, that new sign you see there is a project that was done by our AHS AgMech students, who are also getting involved in the construction project, they built the sign and installed it as well. So this is what you're seeing with our new barns, if you remember from the previous ones, there were no walls, we sometimes had some paneling or some grating, and in many cases, some plywood, so now we have actual barn doors with the weather doors at the bottom there when open can provide cool ventilation, and on cold or inclement weather days, we can close those as well. We also now have rolling overhead garage doors on all the barns to protect them again from any weather situations that we need to. Brand-new concrete that is just waiting for the new pens and panels to come in, which we are also getting all new, let me see if I've got the date right on this, we're getting our, our new pens, they'll be coming out in a couple of weeks, and the students will be setting those up. This is still in progress, but this will be when it is all cemented out, our new sand and manure pits, which if you also remember from the past, our sand was just on the grass, leading to obvious issues for students and cleanliness for the animals and that as well. And this is also still in progress, although I do think there was, this picture was taken Friday, and I believe it's been updated even more, Jason told me this morning, this is our new cattle wash station, which again was free-floating previously, so now it will be all cemented into the ground. Some of the other things we have coming up that I want to share with you, the dedication and hard work of our ag teachers, they have been out there working consistently, along with Kelly Sharp and Larry Wilson, Parker Blair, all of, Jason's team is bound out helping, as well as a lot of our technology team, this has been a group effort, but we are hoping to welcome students back in later this month to start setting up their pens and panels. Steers will arrive in mid-May, and I also want to share that in addition to the work we've been doing on the barns, we have purchased two brand-new aluminum gooseneck 24-foot trailers, one will be on the North Barn and one will be on the South Barn for our programs to share. In addition to the sign that the AgMech team has built, we are also working with a donation to replace all of the rusted light covers and some other additional enhancements that are going to come as well. So, I want to thank you guys again for the funds to do this, this has been a much-needed project, and I'm really proud of everybody that has jumped in to help with this. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lee? Mr. Kertjoffe? Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Oh, I had one, I had one. Hey, Dr. Lee, you don't need to come back, no, no, okay, yeah, you do, that's right. I was just wondering, are, I know the community before was just, the South Ag Barn was wondering about parity, right, with the North, would you say we're at parity once all of this is done?
That is the ultimate goal from what we've been trying to do, again, is to align it to the programmatic standards, obviously with a brand-new building that the North Barn is, there's going to be some different things in there, but our goal was to remove any of the hazards, the safety hazards that were there previously, any of the inequities that were there previously, that has been our primary goal, so we are working with Public Communications to get a time as well where the students and parents can come out to review it, and I'm sure we'll continue to make improvements as we go, this won't be the end-all.
Sure, thanks, Dr. Lee.
Anybody further? Thank you, Dr. Lee. Item 7D, Board of Trustees Continuing Education Announcement for the 2024-2025 school year. In accordance with state law and board policy, BBD, the Board President shall announce the status of each Board Member's continuing education credit at the last regular board meeting before the election of trustees. All members of the UMBLE Independent School District Board of Trustees have completed the continuing education credits required by law, with the exception of Mr. Sitten, who will be stepping down from the board following the May 3, 2025 election, and Mr. Marcus Holmes, who is in the process of completing his two requirements. Any questions from the board on this item? Item 7E, Updates from Board Associations and Committees. Anybody over here, to my right? Mr. Kertjoffe?
Finance Committee is scheduled to meet next Monday. The Texas Legislature is busy, and we are watching many public education bills closely. We are optimistic about the state allocating more funds to the school districts. During a legislative year, we create two separate budget projections, one based on current law and the other based on pending legislation, so we can be prepared for anything. I am proud of the administration for their hard work, putting us in a position where we can include competitive salary increases and staffing needs for special education and Lake Houston Middle School in the current law budget projection. Administration will provide more details at the First Budget Workshop in a few weeks, and just special thanks to Billy and Terry with the AD. And just special thanks to Billy and Terry with the ADA and attendance numbers coming up. Thank you.
Anybody further over here to my right? Over here to my left, Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, I, I'll just give you a quick update on building and planning. There was some concern at the last meeting when we discussed and looked at another option that could be available to us with the detention pond, and I just wanted to assure everyone that after discussions with the Precinct 3, Commissioner Ramsey's office said that as long as we do certain things in terms of sidewalking, and there was, and that the detention pond will cover and the sidewalking will cover those, beyond those two streets, they said, no, they're happy to continue to, to have their million dollars put towards landscaping and other beautification needs that the site will entail, as they did prior. So we're waiting to be able to come back with a, another proposal to go along with the current proposal that the Board had approved at 3.8 million, and the reason that will have to be reconsidered is that that proposal at 3.8 is no longer 3.8, it's, it's around 6.5 million. So the Board will have to decide, do we want to do that at 6.5 or consider the other dry pond option at, I think it's 2, 2.8. And the good news is, though, that both those numbers can come down by a million because that doesn't include the county putting money towards any of the work that would be included in those 6.5 and 2.8 number. So that's, that's the good news. And I went back and checked and I, on the Ross Sterling Middle School naming, back in the February 7, 2025 minutes that went out to everyone, it did talk about the discussions that happened between Dr. Brown, Dr. Sabert, and Mr. Stube and Mayor Funderburke. And the end of that, they went through what the numbers were to change the names, and one was 1.3 million, one was flipping names, that was almost a million, and that, another one was to just come up with a completely new name for Ross Sterling, that was the least expensive, and, or both campuses get new names, it was a million eight. So there were some pretty big numbers. But at the end of the day, when they, they met, the City of Umla decided to go along with the annexation. We asked them for some of that land on that project, and it was withdrawing its request to change the name. Now, if the Board wants to discuss that further and wants to change it anyway, the Board can certainly do that. But that was the information that was provided at that time, so it wasn't as if it went into a black hole anywhere. So those are the only comments I wanted to make on building and planning.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. Anybody further? Ms. Lamont Dixon?
May I ask a question of building and planning?
Mr. Binkley?
Sure.
No, I, I think that, I think the, the concern was not that it was in the notes from February 7th, it was more so that it wasn't on the agenda for us to have a discussion. So I, I would like to see it. I mean, whether it passes or not, I do think building and planning should bring it forth to the full Board so that it's not seeming like it's being decided in committee. I think that's the concern.
No, that's fair, that's a fair criticism, and I, I know it's not a criticism, but it's just how you'd like, and that's fine. And I will pass that baton to Madam President, if, you know, next meeting you want to put it on. I know staff is ready, could speak to it, and we can discuss it. Because I, I know I went through those pretty quickly, those numbers, but they're all some big numbers, depending on which lever you want to push, so, yeah, I mean, it's fine by me, so, you know, if.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo.
Mr. Sitten?
Hi. I'm almost at, at a loss for words, because I've asked for this to be put on agenda on multiple meetings, and I was basically shut down and said, there's no appetite for it, and to go look at the, the committee meeting minutes. So now all of a sudden, everybody's happy and let's talk about it. So, I don't know. That was just more of a comment, more of a frustration, because I've been working on this for several months and getting absolutely nowhere.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Anybody further?
Yeah, I, my only response would be that the mayor told administrators who met that he was backing away with that request. So I, so we can still, we can pursue it as the Board outside of, at request of the City of Umla, maybe, and I'm okay with that, I mean, but, Madam President.
Mr. Sitten?
At no point in time did I ever talk about the City of Umla. You know, this was something about the community, and that's the way I approached it. And to piggyback on what Ms. Lamont Dixon said, again, we asked for it, we, and, and there was a study done, but it didn't come to the Board to look at the study and discuss the study. It was in committee, and the choice was made not to bring it forward. Now, all of a sudden, well, I don't know, I, I don't know if you still have to pull the Board to put it on, I mean, it's your, it's your discretion if you want to put something on an agenda, or you can pull the Board, but you pulled the Board multiple times on this issue, and it's been, there's two, two people, or one person, or three people have raised their hand to at least talk about it. And I just don't understand on something this simple, why it's taken now three meetings for us to talk about it for now a possibility of us even talking about it publicly in a Board meeting. It, it just makes no sense to me, and it doesn't require a response or anything, it's just, that's just the way we've been doing things. And, you know, it's, it's almost like sometimes I show up here and I'm wasting my freaking time because decisions have already been made. And, you know, all I'm asking for is, let's have a conversation, and, and then it just never happens, so.
Thank you for your feedback, Mr. Sitten. Mr. Binkley, I'm going to ask a question of building and planning as well. Could we please consider naming a facility after George Foreman? Could you explore that?
Well, it was, sorry, Madam President. It was brought up, but in the minutes, we didn't feel we really, as a committee, should make a decision like that without the Board deciding as a, as a body, is that something that they want to pursue? I, because I'm.
We can pull the Board at the end of the meeting.
But we just felt that that was sort of, I know you couldn't be at the meeting, the last one, but it's in the, it's in the minutes, and it says we, in effect, tabled it, you know, that's really not a technical term for the committee, but we, we didn't feel like we should move forward with that until the Board decides, yeah, let's go ahead and explore that, because there's some steps that need to happen for us to do it, and I think one is to, if the Board says, yeah, let's, let's, let's proceed, or let's pursue it, you do have to talk to the family. They, they may or may not be interested in that, you know, and what are you gonna, what is it that we're gonna name? And so that would be, that would be where the committee could come up with suggestions, but only if the Board, as a group, says, yeah, let's, let's do that. Makes sense?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Jerry and her team for a wonderful Boots and Bling. It was an awesome event for the Education Foundation. A lot of hard work went into that, and it was a great success, so congratulations. Our last item, 7F Financial Services Report is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the Board regarding this item? Moving on to our closing, closing items, I, comments by individual Board members. I'll begin with Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, today we had public comments, we had a comment from the superintendent, and I personally am quite disheartened by the word lynching, lynch, whatever it was, being used in a staff meeting to our leadership. If I were present and heard that, I would be offended, and I did already share this with Dr. Brown, so he, he does know that. I'm thankful that we are doing, in an investigation. But I, I, it's challenging also because I feel like in that moment, no one in the Cabinet even said, hey, Dr. Brown, maybe this wasn't the right word to use, and, you know, and to kind of follow up with that. I won't go any deeper on that because I know there's an investigation, and I don't want to hinder it in any way. But the other challenge I have is that we had the item on the agenda, but there wasn't a, a way to make a motion. And I think over the last two years, when we were investigating situations, we put people on leave, or we made a motion to have the discussion. And, and I don't think that it should be different this time, but it was. So I just want to state for the record that if it were written in the agenda the way it had been written before, I would have made a motion for us to discuss whether or not the superintendent should be placed on leave while we're doing an investigation.
I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. I just want to, one, remind the Board that there is nothing on the agenda to put a superintendent on leave, and two, that would be a closed-session conversation under 21.355. It is not something we should be talking about right now in open session.
Well, I'll just say this, as an African-American female, I think it's inappropriate for anyone to use the word lynching in Umla ISD when they are speaking in front of a crowd. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody to my left? Mr. Holmes?
Again, a very, I just want to measure my response. Let me be clear on, on this one thing. Me and Dr. Brown have had several conversations around this situation that happened two weeks ago today. Let me be very clear. Beyond the shadow of a doubt, I do not believe that Dr. Brown is racist. Let me also be clear that his comments were incendiary, inflammatory, but I think that there's a level of ownership when you make comments like that. And in a corporate setting, when you're the CEO of a company, and there's been gaffes, I've done it myself as a, as a people manager throughout my career, you have to own it. And I know that there's an investigation, so won't go into too much depth, but I wanted to also state on the record as somebody who's looked at it from both sides, I'll say this, I think the commentary has been, after the comments were made, the option was made to speak with Dr. Brown. From the standpoint of people feeling possibly fearful in terms of jeopardy of their job, in terms of retaliation, it's very hard to judge whether something only impacted a group of six people unless you've canvassed every single person with the optics of, can they share this without any ounce of fear of retaliation, or feeling that they could be bullied, or anything of that nature? So I think to put the lens that this didn't impact but six people, which is what I've been hearing, is incorrect in how you ascertain the weight of the comments. As a Black man, I completely understand what it means to feel marginalized. I don't walk in that, wasn't raised to. But let me be clear, you cannot judge the weight of that commentary by the people that raised their hand and said, I have a problem. Throughout history, whether it's women being thrown misogynistic terms, whether they have had to feel the weight of men and their inappropriate conversations, or talk, or those types of things, if you ask the average, average woman if they've come forward or felt comfortable coming forward when certain things have happened, and they'll tell you they haven't, so in the same breath, you can't judge the weight of how this affected people, Black, White, Latino, Asian, that were in that meeting. You can't judge it by the weight of, by, by the people that came forward. So I just want to make sure that it's clear, very clear, that I think all this could have been resolved if we had have owned it from June Street. And I think when that didn't happen, that's why there's certain people that are not mad, let me be clear, but are concerned and hurt. And how you apologize when you've offended somebody is you apologize and own it in the same way that you did it. So I don't think that it's lost on anybody, this is a sensitive topic, but I again want to say that, again, let me be very, 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 very clear, I do not believe that Dr. Brown is racist. I can say that as a Black man, I know what racism looks like. I don't sit and walk in Dr. Brown's house, I don't follow him around, but from the interactions that we've had, I don't believe that, or his comments absolutely insensitive, absolutely. Do we all have some things that we need to work on? Yep. Do we all make gaffes? Yep. But we got to own it. That's all I have to say.
Anybody to my right? Mr. Grabowski?
It's a sensitive issue, obviously. We place people on a leave of absence if they.
Mr. Grabowski, I'm going to warn you about talking about leave of absence.
Okay. I was just going to say it didn't fall into those buckets. So there was no need, and it's under investigation, so I'm not sure how we can have an opinion until we find out what the investigation yields. I'll move on to the next topic. Madam President, happy birthday.
Oh, do we, can I, can I respond to that? It's commentary.
Can I finish?
It's commentary. I just, let me say this.
Can Mr. Grabowski finish his?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, on to some other topics that went on in the last couple of weeks. Went to the Student of Character Luncheon. Thank you, Mrs. Hobbs, Ms. Irvin, and 34 students who are there out of 48,000, that's what Dr. Moy from Wood Creek Middle School put that number out there. 48,000 students who are in District 34 honored the comments by the principals were amazing, how cool these kids were. One boy, one girl from each middle school and from each high school, a terrific afternoon luncheon, and the lunch was supplied by the Summer Creek Culinary Students. Awesome, awesome, awesome. And Mrs. Hayhurst, or Ms. Hurst, with your support team of Ms. Rachel Smith, Ms. Leah Brinkley, Ms. Kathy Eubanks. Sometimes people approach us and say, you know, what are you doing with the books and the curriculum and so on and so forth, and how it seems to be done in the middle of the night, and nobody really knows what's going on. They've been on display since the end of February, all day and even in the evenings. And if you want to know what the district is proposing, you have to drive to the ISC and go see it. Mrs. Hayhurst and her team have done an amazing job of displaying that for everybody to see. And then it has to go through three committees before a final approval is done. And already stated, Ms. Momberrin, Boots and Bling, thank you, ma'am, it was terrific, there you are. And special shout-out to Ms. Amy Harris, Elementary Teacher of the Year from Whispering Pines, and Ms. Pines, and Ms. Cassandra DeBodis, Kingwood Park High School, the District Teacher of the Year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Mr. Scarfo, do you have anything?
I just want, excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Holmes, I agree with you. I, as a person, do not believe that the gentleman to my right is racist. And as I shared with Ms. Lamont Dixon earlier, yeah, I get the insensitivity of certain words for people of different races, different cultures even, because it goes beyond that. So, yeah, and we always need to be aware of that. But I will take just some disagreement with you that I believed when it was brought to Dr. Brown's attention, he did own it. Now, you may disagree with what the next step was and what was actually done, what you felt should have been done, and that's fine. And I'm right there with you to say, yeah, you're entitled to that belief and so is everyone else who was impacted by it. But I'll just leave it at that, as far as that goes. And I just want to also, just a friendly warning to all those who are running in Position Five. I got an email from, and some of you might remember him, my young friend, Ta Nam, who was here and spoke. I met him at Fall Creek Matters Lunch. He's already thrown his hat in the ring. He told me he will be running for school board in 2036. And I got to tell, whoever wins, enjoy the next 11 years because you're going for a tough race when that 2036 comes. And he's already told me that he's planning to run for the congressional seat, I think it's '18, in 2040 or, I forget what the exact year. He asked me for my endorsement. I said, I'm happy to give it to you. I don't know if it'll help because I may not even be here by 2036. But anyway, just, you got fair warning. So enjoy the next 11 years, whoever should win that race.
Mr. Scarfo, I'd remind you that electioneering speech is inappropriate for candidates.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Sitten? And me too. Dr. Brown, are there any topics for future board business?
Ms. Lamont Dixon? Well, if we are going to, or if you're going, if you choose to put on the agenda that we discuss the naming or renaming of the middle schools, maybe you can also include the conversation about the George Foreman, because maybe that would be an option for one of the schools if we do a renaming. So just wanted to kind of throw that out there. I mean, you can poll the board or not, but I just wanted to say that may be an opportunity to do both.
Thank you. Anybody further? The time is now 9:42 PM. This meeting is adjourned.